Well, thank you everyone for coming tonight. We are now opening the October 22nd, 2019, Talkin' Board of Education Work Session. It is now in session. I want to start by introducing the people here tonight that you see. First of all, fellow board members, vice chairman, Reverend Riz, he's right here, Mr. Steve Combs, Dr. Gary Childers, this is Dr. Jay Fenwick, my name is Roddick, I'm the chair. To my right is Chad Robertson, and he is with Clark Nixon Architects from Asheville. We have Mr. Chris Campbell from Campbell Shapley Associates in Asheville, attorney. You know Dr. Elliott, who's the superintendent of Elliott. Oh, and on the front row, Peter Bradshaw, he's a civil engineer with Civil Design Concepts out of Nashville. Oh, Patrick Bradshaw, what did I say? Oh, King Tree, I'm sorry. Patrick Bradshaw, he's Civil Designs. The purpose of this meeting tonight is pretty singular. It's to hear information and have discussion regarding the Hodges property. And that's why we're here. The agenda for the following meeting will be as follows. First, our attorney will at this time review the timeline and legal requirements for the purchase of property by Board of Education. The attorney will also review the actions taken so far by the school board. And he will also discuss the appraisal process that we went through to get the property appraised and certified. So... [inaudible] Is that good? Excellent. Good evening. Mr. Henrys, Dr. Elliott, members of the Valley Christian Community, it is my pleasure to be here. I'm Chris Campbell, my law firm is Campbell Shapley. We're up in Asheville, and we represent school boards and community colleges, that's just what we do. But if I've got any reason to be standing here right now, in terms of my relationship with this board and history with this county, I am proud to say it's been my honor to work with this board since a gentleman named Andy Reese was chairman of the Board of Education, and a gentleman named Dr. Richard Jones was the superintendent. So I may live in Asheville, but my heart, a lot of times, is in Otaka County, and my pleasure to work with your school board and your schools, so I'm happy to be here. Very briefly, what I want to do for the board, and also for the community, is just kind of review the legal process involved in purchasing property. I think there are some statutes that kind of delineate how that process works, kind of dispel some of the myths or some of the misunderstandings that go along with purchasing property, and then talk a little bit about the Hodges property specifically, and the process that the board has gone through so far in reviewing that particular piece of property. And I think the chairman has some additional comments that you may be interested in too, as often being in terms of the purpose of meeting. But let me review statutes quickly. I don't want to spend a lot of time on those, but I think it's important for the board and the audience to understand. First of all, 115C is the chapter that deals with public schools in North Carolina. It is the chapter in general statutes that establishes the authority and powers of the Board of Education. Under subchapter 36, the General Assembly has given full control for all education matters to local school boards. The decisions affecting the education of public school children in North Carolina only belongs to the General Assembly, to the extent they keep it. It only belongs to the State Board of Education, to the extent they give the State Board certain powers, or the State Board has certain powers. County commissioners are only involved at a certain level, and will be the level in which the county is involved in property purchases and just a minute. But everything else affecting public schools is left to the sound discretion of the Board of Education. So when it comes to issues such as this, this board has been delegated the authority and responsibility to answer those questions, not the General Assembly, not the courts, not anybody else. Subchapter 40 talks about possession of real property, and says that it is the Board of Education, not the county. A lot of folks think that county commissioners actually have title of school property. By statute, school boards hold the title to all real property that is used for schoolhouses in the state of North Carolina. The law does not require any public hearing prior to a school board contract before the purchase of real property. So a lot of times, the statutes do require public hearings, public comment, public input for certain decisions of government in the state of North Carolina. Acquiring property is not something that the statutes actually require a meeting on the public hearing before that property in that contract that they entered into. If anyone in the audience has ever purchased a property, think about trying to negotiate property while at the same time having that negotiation be a matter of public record, including the terms to which they're interrelated, and the issue of the building, and all of that. Which leads us to the open meetings law. The open meetings law, in fact, has a very specific exception in 143-318.11181 that allows any government entity, not just school boards, that any government entity in the state of North Carolina can go into closed session for the purpose of establishing and instructing that public entity's staff or negotiating agents regarding or regarding the position to be taken when it comes to the price or other material term of a contract versus property. Again, if Scott can think about it for two seconds and make sense, the board needs to be able to negotiate for property like any private person in the world, and therefore the board can do that in private, to have those discussions in private, and decide on what price to pay to enter the contract in private. Again, the law does not require any public hearing prior to execution of a contract for the purchase of real property. General Statute 115C 517 is the delegation of discretionary decision to school boards to decide if a site is suitable for schools. That decision, again, by law, is ultimately up to the Board of Education that is elected by the people to make these decisions, and the board may acquire a suitable site for schoolhouses. That is a major reason that this board is here this evening. You are here, not here to me, you're here to listen to your architect, to your engineer, to talk about the issues on the site, water issues, traffic issues, permitting issues, all of those things that go into deciding whether or not a site is suitable for school persons. Again, the law gives that to you. That is not a decision the county commissioners can make, and it is a classic political decision. So it's not a decision from courts either, it's a decision from school. 115C 426 is the check on the purchase price. Since school boards are funded through at the lower property taxes and through certain dedicated sales taxes in the state of North Carolina, that's your money, folks that are sitting in the audience tonight, it's money that's generated through property ownership and your purchasing things. The county commission is required to approve the amount to be spent for the site. So that is a check on the purchase price. We'll talk about appraisals and other things in a minute, but the county commission actually has to say, yes, board, you can go forward and pay that particular cost for a piece of property, right there in the general statutes. So now, let's talk quickly about the history that's important for this property. First of all, the property was identified as a possible site by a gentleman who's sitting here this evening, board member Steve Combs, when he joined the board in December of 2018. He is the one who brought the Hodges property to the attention of the school board. The appraisal of the property was completed by Mr. Michael Sweeting, who I think many of you in the audience know, he did that appraisal on January 14th of 2019. At that time, he valued the property at $1,105,000. He was using the best information on the size of the property at that time, which was approximately 13 acres. So according to Mr. Sweeting's appraisal, the property had a per acre value of $85,000. After that appraisal, a more detailed survey was done on the property to ascertain the actual acreage, it's actually slightly more, 1.3 additional acres. The school board's still going to make the contract at the appraised price, so that brings the per acre price that the school board is paying down to $70,500. So actually, the per acre price is less than the value that Mr. Sweeting found in his appraisal for the per acre price. He also was negotiating with the family, and the contract was executed on March 3rd of 2019. It then went to Otaka County Board of Commissioners for approval of the purchase price. And the Board of Commissioners did approve the purchase price at that time. That approval was given by resolution on March 19th, 2019, in an open meeting of the Board of Commissioners. So that statutory requirement has been satisfied. Since then, the board has been looking at the suitability of property, and I think that is a typical for folks that purchase property, you know, there's an inspection period, if you've ever purchased a house, you have time to do inspections, evaluations, testing. That is amplified, obviously, in the school board. So you enter into a contract not knowing if you're going to close on the property. That is the way it is done. There is nothing untoward about entering into a contract. And then, during the test, during during your evaluations, that is, in fact, the way it's done, the contract allows for it, so that the board can look at things just like you could as private a home. So the contract allows for the inspection period, which right now will terminate on November 15th of 2019. So tonight's part of that process. Tonight's part of the board looking at the information with the architects and the engineers bringing it forward, so that the board can make an informed decision, back to the general statutes, of whether or not the Hodges property is a suitable property for a real interest school. As a side, it is a crime for any board member or employee of the Board of Education to in any way receive a direct benefit or profit in any manner whatsoever from the sale of a piece of property. So no Otaka County board member, no staff member has any financial stake in the sale or purchase of this piece of property. For any board member to profit at all, to have an account of interest in the sale, again, would be a crime. So that's something that is not an issue. Finally, there has been a county meeting in which there was public comment about a text amendment to the ordinance, the overlay ordinance, that applies here in the district, as far as the historic nature of the district. It has a provision called 2.8, it is entitled Certificate of Appropriateness. So that text amendment allows her to be a school in the historic district. That is the purpose of the text amendment, because the ordinance was silent on schools. The county feels like the best way to deal with that is to specifically allow schools to be at use here in the district. But the school board is not exempted under that change from 2.8. And 2.8 says that the Valley Christian Historic Preservation Commission will be tasked with ensuring that the school is harmonious within the district, in terms of building materials, in terms of plans and designs. That ordinance is, there are not hard and fast rules in that ordinance. It's a very subjective ordinance, the way it's written, but it does have some basic criteria in it. It also recognizes that new structures can be contemporary. So as new structures are built, the park, the local park, there are other things, they have to fit in with the nature of the district, but there is a recognition in the ordinance that structures hardly can be contemporary, they're not going to necessarily look like they're 100 or 150 years old. Comments will also be required for the state Historical Commission. You may be wondering, how does the state Historical Commission get involved? When you build a school, not in the purchase of the property, but when you build a school, this school board and the architect will submit the plans to the North Carolina Department of Public Construction, Division of Insurance, they have to review the plans. The North Carolina historical statute says anytime a state agency takes action in a historical district, they must get a comment from the state Historical Commission. Comment, it's not an approval process, it's a comment process. So yes, there will be comments from Raleigh, from the state Historical Commission in Raleigh, but that won't happen until and only if the school board decides to move forward, build a school, plans are actually submitted to the North Carolina Department of Public Construction at that time. So that's the additional layer that is involved with that. So again, tonight is part of that process. Very quickly on the appraisal, Mr. Sweeting did do the appraisal. He's been a North Carolina certified appraiser since 1991. He looked at it as a 13-acre parcel, and looked at comparable land sales in the area, and came up with this valuation. He did take into account that the flood plain was part of this property. I think it is no secret to any one in this audience that if you own property, if you're Otaka County, or Valley Christian, any property is in the flood plain. The deposit area of my plain is a one acre in the flood plain. He took that into account, and he said this value was also based on the site being engineered for reasonable development. So I think with the appraisal, the question becomes very simple. Can you use the entire parcel for a school? It pulls together a very straightforward, very practical question that the gentleman here is about to address for the school board. So he did take that into account. The board went one step further. The board had Mr. Sweeting's appraisal reviewed by another appraiser, a man by the name of Scott Robinson with the Appraisal Institute. He has several designations that you can see there on the screen. I think if you added a lawyer, a doctor, a dentist, we still would not have as many letters after our name as Mr. Robinson has achieved in his career, but he was hired to review Mr. Sweeting's work to determine if it was valid. He issued a report to the Board of Education on October 8th. In that report, he found that the Sweeting appraisal was supported by market data, that comparable sales were appropriately adjusted in coming up with the final appraised value, and he found that the appraisal certainly met the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice. Appraisers are like lawyers. You have two of them, you're bound to get 10 different opinions. So Mr. Robinson looked at the appraisal and said, yes, it is 100% valid, it follows the requirements of the appraisal industry, and it's based on reasonable adjustments and a reasonable assumption about being able to use the property for the school. So that is what we did, Mr. Chairman, and now turn the mic back over to you, so you can hear from your architect and engineer. All right. At this time, we're going to hear from our architect, Mr. Robinson, and our engineer, our best land use and crown conditions related to the Hodges property, specifically including the impact of flooding.
Good evening, Valley Christian Community, and good evening, school board. Appreciate you all having us here tonight. My name is Chad Robertson, I'm an architect with Clark Nixon. I've been with Clark Nixon for a long time, 20, over 23 years, this will be my 24th year with the staff. I'm licensed to practice architecture in over 25 states, Kansas, and Ontario. So I practice all over the country, but I primarily call Western North Carolina my home. And I'm very proud to say that I do have a freshman aid group right now as well, so I'm very proud of that, but most of them are proud of all of those items. My colleague and good friend is Patrick Bradshaw, Civil Design Concepts. Good evening, and again, appreciate the reception.
Yeah, my name is Patrick Bradshaw, I'm with Civil Design Concepts. I'm a civil engineer by trade. Grew up in Haywood County, just down the road from here. While I don't have an average freshman, we did take our first official college visit to Hattie State yesterday with our son, so at least he's got a gato in that camp. So my firm, Civil Design Concepts, we practice primarily land development work. I describe it to my daughter this way. We make flat spots, whether those be for buildings or apartment lots, wherever folks are looking to move some reasonably amount of earth. We deal with floodplain issues, onsite septic matters, interface with VAT. Ordinarily, we, through our firm, we're working about 200 projects a year or something like that, where we have staff, about 40 folks, about 15 engineers, so I appreciate the opportunity to give you some information this evening.
So several years ago, the school board engaged Clark Nixon to evaluate all the different facilities that you have, including all the schools. And part of that evaluation was evaluating Valley Christian. The process and methodology that we use to evaluate this is based on Department of Public Construction evaluation criteria. And basically, what you're doing with your story, with your facilities, you're looking at the land, you're looking at... I'm sorry, is that better? Okay. All right, I'll try to stay close on the microphone. Part of that process is basically establishing a score sheet for each one of your schools in the district. And Valley Christian was identified as one that looks very questionable about whether or not you should renovate that facility, or to build a new facility as a cost conversion. So during this time period, the Hodges property was identified as an alternative site, and we're using that as a comparison between this existing site and the current situation for that. So Rockstone Road is located to the south of the property. The river is located to the north. The existing school that we're in right now is just over to the west on that side, so just to get everyone oriented. So during this process, we're having a weigh-in pros and cons of each one of these sites, and investigate what did it seem to best interest of the school board, and also to provide you guys data to make your decision processes. So there's a number of items that are associated with the pros and cons of this site. One of the big pros is if you're building on an adjacent site or a different site other than this, you're not disrupting the students. And that's a huge issue as you go through the construction activity, that will likely take 24 months to build a facility. The other issue is being able to take more of your construction dollars and put it towards educational requirements versus putting it into basing or temporary facilities that students necessarily don't reap the benefits of. So in order to evaluate these sites, we go through a due diligence process. And the due diligence process is a very high-level activity where we are, it's a very methodical process, where we're carefully identifying each one of these items that are listed accordingly. So those 12 items that you see that we have completed thus far are identified basically in order prior. The first one that you see on that is the septic and soil. And so, for example, if on this site, we've done that initial testing for the septic and the soil test, and it failed, the due diligence process will stop. What we want to avoid is, one of the more expensive items is drilling a well, drilling a well prior to doing the septic test would not make sense, because the wells are very expensive items, and you're going to have to spend that money if another portion of it is going to fail during that process. So every time a test is completed, that information is evaluated, and we continually are layering the information onto the site to determine what the rubble area is, or what other forces would be able to impact the design of the school. So as I pointed out, the first 12 items that we've completed, and then there are other future items, I'm looking for the testing, the septic, the zoning process, and the building design. Those four items, there are actually hundreds of other items that are combined within those four items, to give you the full process that's required in order to actually begin the construction on the site. So tonight, what we're going to do is walk you through each one of those 12 items, and what our partners work as we're going through this process. And as I mentioned, the first one, that is the most important, is the septic. Patrick's going to talk briefly about those items.
And so, as we described it, in the absence of municipal or city sewer, is one of my terms, this is absolutely, if you're doing a prudent, a prudent due diligence process, soils and septic evaluation, particularly for, what we would term a large system, like a post school, about 6,000 gallons a day, that is the first thing to look at. In the absence of soils, as Chad mentioned, the property could be a non-sour. It's rather ironic, we'll kind of take a bigger map. So this map is turned to the same orientation of the area that Chad has looked at. To the bottom, the plan south, if you go to Rockstone Road, you go into a kind of a brown textured or shaded area. We have a small stream across the site, that's where you get a, really, just a whited-out section, and then kind of the brighter green to the top. So we'll talk about those in some context. They have done soils evaluation throughout. The favorable area is in the green section on plan north, or to the top, immediately adjacent to Otaka River. This preliminary soils evaluation was performed by Walker Ferguson. I've known him for a number of years, probably 20-plus years. This is not nearly the first public school we have done with Walker, and his group LRM, Land Resource Management. But, you know, looking at those test pits, just in the green area alone, what we call these things, what these evaluations, preliminary, they're really far from preliminary. They are just not final. Preliminary is really becoming a design professional, if you will, whether it be engineer, architect, soil science profession, to say. That is just a document that is not finished, if you will. It doesn't mean that it is less than responsive or less than thorough, it is just not yet complete, so therefore, we determine preliminary. Our own licensing board even says, if your work product is not final, it shall bear a stamp that calls it preliminary. So just to give that some context, the soils, ironically, again, in the green area, immediately adjacent to Otaka, is by far the most favorable area on the septic property for onsite wastewater disposal. This is, for those of you that have a septic system in your home, or maybe even in your business, this is very similar to that, it's just on a larger scale. To give you some scale, a three-bedroom home generates about 360 gallons of wastewater that 120 gallons a bed, you know, is kind of the amount that the state pulls, you know, from their regulations. The school is derived by, whether we have cafeteria, whether we have showers, and things like that, based on the school population, we anticipate that this project could be about 6,000 gallons a day. The soil profile here is actually very, very favorable, you know, for soils, it's a sandy loam soil. There's a couple of things, we use the term restricted horizons. So restricted horizons can be, when we're dealing with more cobble or rock than we are soil, that can become a restricted horizon, as well as the presence of water table can become a restricted horizon. And when we say water table, we don't necessarily have to find water, or the soil scientists have to find water every time they dig the trench or dig a test pit, but they can tell based upon oxidation within the soil, reducts, or more effective, I think, is the term, pardon me, I'm no soil scientist. But there are traces that history has left behind that will tell emphatically where the shallow high water table exists, if you will. So it's not subjective, it's not, yes, or if you will, it is, it is in fact, no. Unlike attorneys, if you took four soil scientists to the same pit, they would all eventually agree, if you will, as to where the high water table existed. So with that said, we have two pits, the shallowest we find the water table is about 40 to 45 inches in those two pits. There are many other pits, there's as many as 20 pits, just in the green area alone, I think exactly 18, approaching 20. And in many of those places, the water table's at about 60 inches of presence of that said water table. So all of that said, and understand, and I'm going to talk about flooding in just a second, but with respect to an onsite sewer system, we are first told by the regulations, we have to satisfy, we have to be 24 inches separate from that high water table as identified in the soil science report, with our green field. And there's a number of types of ground fields, and I'm going to take you through all of the examples. All of that said, let's go on the idea, and I want to take the easy math for our, right now, that says, if we had 44 inches of soil to the water table, and we take 24 inches of those, or two feet away, then that would leave, say, comments, or I don't know if you guys can picture it, but I think that would leave us 20 inches of soil table. So there are a number of different onsite septic types, drain field types, that we can work with within that 20-inch soil horizon. So this is basically, you know, we are only further separating ourselves from the water table, if you will, to the bottom of any septic trench. The other curiosity, and this is a very legitimate question that I know is out there, many of board members specifically have asked me this, is about the ideology of what happens when the drain field floods. The problems of this is not only in the flood plain, but in the floodway. So I've talked with, obviously, Walker Ferguson about that, the same, have talked with experienced folks at the state that permit these large onsite septic systems statewide, and post to the Tennessee line, if you will. The shallowest we find the water table is about forty to forty-five inches in those two pits. There are many other pits, there's as many as twenty pits, just in the green area alone, I think exactly eighteen, approaching twenty. And in many of those places, the water table's at about sixty inches of presence of that said water table. So all of that said, and understand, and I'm going to talk about flooding in just a second, but with respect to an onsite sewer system, we are first told by the regulations, we have to satisfy, we have to be twenty-four inches separate from that high water table as identified in the soil science report with our grain field. And there's a number of types of grain fields and I'm going to take them through all the details I promised. All of that said, let's go on the idea, and I want to take the easy math for our, right now, that says if we had forty-four inches of soil to the water table and we take twenty-four inches of those four two feet away, then that would leave us a, I'm not sure if that's in that picture, but I think that would leave us twenty inches of soil table. So there are a number of different onsite septic types, drain field types that we can work with within that twenty-inch soil horizon. So this is basically, you know, we're, we are only further separating ourselves from the water table, if you will, to the bottom of any septic trench. The other curiosity, and this is a very legitimate question that I know is, is out there, many of board members specifically have asked me this, is about the ideology of what happens when the grain field floods. The problems of this is not only in the flood plain, but in the floodway. So I've talked with obviously Walker Ferguson about that, the same, have talked with experienced folks at the state that permit these large onsite septic systems statewide and opposed to the Tennessee line, if you will. And, and think about it, probably the most simplistic term I could put it in is this way, is whether you are in a flood plain or flood-prone piece of property or an upfield piece of property, an upland piece, is really irrespective of the part that we are most concerned about in order to move this wastewater out of this septic area because, you know, every time we put six thousand gallons in the ground, there's a new six thousand gallons that get generated the next day. We need to keep that moving. We're not so much worried about the water that's on top of us, we're really worried about that water table below us and keeping certain separation. There's a number of very sophisticated flow modeling techniques and models that Walker Ferguson and his group has used to ensure that, mounting analysis and a number of things that I haven't talked in detail about. But just think of it that way, and even if you have an upland piece of property, if we get ten inches of rainfall and a beam of saturated soil, even though it might not be terribly flooded, the top of any given grain field could be just as saturated as this grain field might be. But what you want to know in fact is can we move wastewater out the bottom of that trench and move it along through the soil? So that's kind of a, pardon my lack of breadth there, but I didn't know better way than part of it.
Also important to note is that if the green and the brown areas were flooded, the project would stop because we can't build in the floodway. We can build in the flood plain, but we cannot build in the floodway. The next step in the process was to have a modern survey performed on the property. And a number of things that we're documenting in the survey is the actual size of the property. As Chris pointed out, the original problem was it was about thirteen acres, but in fact it was almost fifteen acres at fourteen point eight degree. The other piece of ours is to formally document where the floodway and the flood plain is located and to do a topographical survey to identify what the slopes are and the grades that are on the site. All of that was performed successfully by a gentleman local to here, an arch survey. And with that, we moved on to the next step in the process, which was a basin one environmental report. Woods Environmental performed that report under the ASK guidelines for evaluation of the site. Their findings was of no significance and allowed us to move on to the following step in the process, which was an archaeology study of the site. This is not a requirement for the site, but based on the due diligence process that the board was going through, it recommended that we go through an archaeology study on the site. This was performed with conversations with the state archaeologists, making sure that they were doing the appropriate study in that facility. That report found nothing of significance to report in that area. Upon completion of those items, we began a geotechnical survey of the southern portion of the site just below the stream areas. The goal of the geotechnical survey is to determine the bearing capacity of the soils and to also determine seismic classifications, location of the water table, and also the type of foundation systems. We are also the architects of the new recreation facility and we anticipated that the soils in this area were going to be very similar to what we have been faced with on that site. And in fact, that came true. The report was generated, the information based on the report was that we did need a deep foundation system, that there was relatively high water table relative to the building pad and bearing capacity would need to be adjusted with the foundation. So again, it met our criteria and we moved on to the next step in that process. Based on the location of the site and adjacency to the rivers, we're proven to do a wetlands delineation and location for any potential wetlands that were on the site. There were three areas that were identified as wetlands to the north, you can refer to see this as right adjacent to the river, is a very time limit. Then there are two other smaller areas that are adjacent to the Broadstone Street and directly adjacent to the small stream that was on the site. So surveying up those, they were delineated and measured to determine what impacts that would have on the site as well. The next step in this process, and as I mentioned earlier, we're, we're layering information on the site. We're trying to narrow down where the billable area is on the site so that we can locate the building. So we, we took three options for the site just to test the fifth of the building on the site. Of very importance, as all of you are aware, is the flood plain. Patrick has talked about this significantly. Anybody who goes along this Broadstone Street is impacted by the floodway and floodplain in this area. So part of our investigation and how we began the concept layouts was to determine what impacts the floodplain and floodway would have on the way that the site, the way it was oriented. So this diagram that you see in front of you is an analysis of this existing building in comparison to the Hodges facility. So some of the differences between what the floodplain and floodway look like on this site versus the Hodges property. The Hodges property is about five feet above this property as you were going to build up Broadstone Street, the Broadstone Road. The requirements for us to develop within the floodplain area are governed by Wataga Canyon and that basically you have to be above base flood elevation. The diagrams and information we're providing you is two feet above the base flood elevation is the minimum finished floor elevations that the building would, would be able to pocketize. And we'll show you a section of the site in just a second. But that evaluation determines that both floodplain and floodway is there on the site, obviously. And one of the questions that was asked by school board, what happens if you admit a sharp flood or an ocular waterfall? Have we had a long drought in the course of this flood that happens here? So we evaluated that on the site to give you a picture of what that might look like. So the area of the agenda would be covered with water. Basically, this, this building that we're in right now, the water would be above the backboard. That's how much water would be in this area. And the sites that you see, the blue area is the location for where the building is. And the location of the building does not influence the rise of that water in that area. Okay, that's why we're building the floodplain and not the floodway. I think it's also important, as we look at the section on the site, this is just a diagram medical section that I'll include of the site. Broadstone Road is over from the far left, new school facility. Where that background is, is the one hundred year floodplain elevation. As I mentioned earlier, we're actually two feet above that elevation at the minimum location we would locate the building. Wataga River is to the right and there's a small rise in that floodway area that we're talking about. What's important for you guys to understand is the floodplain, the floodway does not drive this site. What drives the site is the connection with the new building and the, and Broadstone Road. Those two have to interface at one another. In fact, we're more than seven feet above what's required for the floodplain location. So twenty-six seventy-five is what the floodplain location is, we're sitting at twenty-six eighty-two is what our elevation is. So you can take this site, raise it up twenty feet, get it out of the floodplain, floodway, it's still layout in exactly the same way on the site. So the floodplain has very little impact on the location of the building. So the first option, we presented this at the last public meeting, was investigate the one-story option on the site. It gets very tight when we start to locate seventy thousand square feet on that building and try to provide enough queuing space for car drop off and for buses. So the next step was to investigate a two-story option. And that two-story option pushed the building deeper into the site, closer to the stream as parking in the front of the facility as opposed to the side of the back. Get queuing and circulation path around the front end of the building, all the buses to right from the left and then car drop off around this area. As an alternative to this, we looked at another scheme. And that third scheme, we began to layer more and more information as we've gotten deeper into the due diligence process. And this third scheme really starts to evaluate how the site can be influenced by all the different parameters that we have discovered during the due diligence process. So with this third option, we began to layer in wetland areas, provide a power to the windows, wetland areas. We also layered in the stream buffers. The well is located in this area right here. There's a buffer that's required around the well. We also looked at the circulation patterns and the traffic that would be generated on the site and how that flowed out. But basically, you can build this site and it would go all the way around this site and it would drop off in this location. Same thing for the buses, you come in here, drop off, and it's a central location where students would come into the facility. One location improved security, much easier to control in that environment. As we move through, the same square footage applies to all of these, by the way. So the next question is playground space. And where do we put playground space on this site? And the floodway makes an excellent location for the playground space. The only challenge you have to back is you can't put anything that's permanent through the floodway. But you could put soccer balls in it or something movable. You could also locate a pavilion in this location that was outside of the floodway area. You could put a backstop in the floodplain area that you could play out into the floodway. So that's another area. You can also do the kind of area where pre-k can be located closer to the, to the school so that you're not having to walk across which are actually the locations. So another, another layer we added to the due diligence process. I think it's important to note that there's a lot of great opportunities for learning on this site and being able to use the streams, the wetlands as part of education curriculum here is very unique to the site. It shouldn't go, I'm just guessing. So the third item that we're laying on, layering on, is domestic water and fire protection. So these have to provide fire pump and storage for those facilities on the site. So this would be located just in the north of the property, a tank right here for storage of the water for the fire pump. There's other questions about stormwater. How do we mitigate stormwater? Stormwater would be located underneath the parking area of this, this location underneath. And then the last item, and we've talked a lot about the septic, there are other components other than the drain fields that are associated with the septic. And those septic components would be located by the septic, so a combination of low-grade tanks for storage and some pre-treatment facilities in that area. As we move through this process, along with the septic and the due diligence, the well is probably the last item of most significance in highest costs as we go through this process. Patrick should have discussed the well briefly.
Yes, Chad mentioned, as, as I mentioned to you earlier, you can change well locations. You could drill an additional well and you can't change soils as I mentioned, so there is round crease in the water organist, these things are to do. But also, the continuing of population of the school, North Carolina Public Water Supply describes a well that serves a school, different population, such as, as a community well, be a part of a large community water system once everything's developed, true and so forth. This basically, at the outset, determining a community well, you have to achieve with the folks from the regional office in Winston-Salem, you have to obtain what's known as a well site approval. So you can take the real space survey, the show diagrammatic site plan, very consistent with some concepts you've seen today. And you have to demonstrate by survey that you control at least a one-hundred-foot radius around that well. That is demonstrated control. There are other offsets that are greater than that, such as we have to be two-hundred feet away from any proposed drain field area. One hundred feet you must be though in your absolute control. So that's demonstrated on the Hodges property as a tour unit today. The well was initially drilled, rather favorably, if you will, at least from a water quantity standpoint. And moved through, I believe the time of drilling, that probably had a well that was building in excess of seventy gallons a minute. We prescribed, as, as the school board, the school system, pure to well griller. There's a couple of further steps behind that for a community well. We need to be not just close to what the quantity of water that this well produces, but we need to, we need to dial in to somewhat an exact measure. So there's four points known as twenty-four hour roll-out test. So they drop the pump in the well, start to drop the water that will be that well, and it's a variable speed pump, so if the water's not dropping, they can ramp up the gas if we'll, if you need to drop that well, until what we call a point of stabilization, to where we feel like we are pumping an equal amount of water as is finding its way into the drilled well problem. Again, the point that we call stabilization. Once you've identified that point, and sometimes fluctuate for just a bit, then that is in fact progressed for twenty-four straight hours, so hence the name twenty-four hour roll-off. All of those items have been completed and in fact, we do have a well that's been drilled that's in excess of seventy, seventy-five gallons a minute. Those things said, give you some, again, some sense of scale. You could likely, you know, provide a school with this size for a well in fifteen to twenty gallon a minute range without problem. So perhaps, you know, a high-yield well at the right is a very good. Water quality testing is, is currently underway. Some of those tests take upwards of about thirty days to get back, just based on the contest of what they offer. So that is in process and will be further communicated forward to everyone in the
So the, the last item that we'll talk about is the traffic from the study perspective. As I've mentioned earlier, we've investigated, we've made discussions with the D O T on this site. And I think it's important to note that we have about twelve hundred feet queuing length, as I mentioned earlier, is where your car are coming through there. Twenty of those area cars, plus car commuting, plus drop offs, as I said, so twelve hundred feet of that and that's single, like single order. So if it's not even another stack, that's one single car, where you know, drop them off and move on. So that's a substantial number of spaces that will be available. It's just a bit appropriate, this, Chris touched on that earlier, that is one of the primary requirements, it's part of the group for the site. And it's just a bit appropriate, this basically mandates that you take into consideration all the different types of architecture that are in this area and that includes things such as the mass, this existing facility, even your new community park that you have over here. It does ask you to design a building that is responsible to that, the use of its interiors and the materiality of the project, tone, brick, siding, and in terms of this is a wood clavering siding. It discourages the use of vertical siding, being that the design of the building, but all of these are taken into consideration when you actually go through that design process. So particular purpose would be required. So the conclusions of these studies thus far, and there's still others that will be continuing, as I mentioned earlier, but the full site is the, or this facility to be constructed on there. Include buildings, parking, septic, well, playground spaces, all of those are necessary in a required full site. The buildings wait for it to be located well above the mandated base flood elevation and large underground connections up in Broadstone Road and, and the site. The soils on the northern half of the site support the septic system. Soals on the southern half of the site do not, but they support the building. Floodwaters covering the septic field would not impact the closure of the school, would not affect the septic system operation. And the design of the building will address the dispute design guidelines. So those are the five of the takeaways that we have thus far in the due diligence process.
At this time, we're going to prepare to accept other comments on the issue. If board members would please come back in place.